So I take it Jake and Tom are going to be gone?
Uh Jake is on line. Uh I don't see Tom on here yet.
Tom's not gonna be here at all today.
Oh, he's not. He hadn't let me know.
Yeah, he let me know he wasn't coming. I thought he let you know. So sorry. Next time I'll pass it along. I just thought we were both getting notified. Okay, it is four thirty and we'll call to order our study session for West Valley City Council, February first. It's four thirty in the afternoon and we're meeting in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We will note that everyone is present and miss except Mr. Hoon and he is excused for the day. We have our minutes from February twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Do we have a discussion or a motion on those minutes?
Move for approval of those minutes?
Thank you.
Second.
Nicole can decide. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those are good. We'll have a review of our this afternoon. Mr. Pyle, is there any changes or?
There are no updates or or changes that I remember. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay. Does anybody on the council have any discussion items or is everything clear for tonight? All good? Okay. We will now introduce our first public hearing, which Mr. Pastrick will do on Zoom. It's going to be regarding application ZT seven twenty twenty one. And it is our parking standards for townhomes. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will share my screen and and review the the ordinance that is before you here. So can everyone see the ordinance? Okay. Okay. So this ordinance change is actually at the request of the city council to address parking standards for townhomes. So it's there's several pages in this, but the reason for the link is whenever we added a definition, the definition section of the code is very long. So many of the pages in this are simply the definition section, but there's only one change to the definitions. And that that change is adding a definition for townhome. So you can see here, this is on page twenty eight, line seven sixty eight, we're adding a a definition for townhome. And then really the meat of the ordinance, you can find beginning on page thirty one. So this this table is the table that includes all the parking ratios for different land uses. And so you can see here at the bottom of the page, lumped together with single family or single unit dwelling and twin homes would be townhomes. And then on the next page is where we have the standard. So and and not to make you seasick here, but this first, at the bottom of this page, it's two spaces per unit is the the number of stalls required. But then when you go down to this next one here, we add language that says that the the depth and width of driveways leading to required garage shall be at least eighteen feet. So then that gives you your additional two stalls outside of the garage. And then also it says dwelling units that are not adjacent to a public street with no more than two lanes shall provide or shall also provide an additional point seven five spaces per unit. So you may recall. Yes.
We blow up your file on screen there. We can't do it from here since you're sharing.
Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. So the this section here again was at the request of the council. So you may recall about about a month ago, we had a development for townhomes along thirty two hundred west. And in that case, the project was along thirty two hundred west, but there was no parking allowed on thirty two hundred west where it's a it's a three lane section, I believe, in that location. There's really no place to park. And so the the request for the council on that point was to not only have driveways for every unit, but to also add additional parking within the development, since there was no on-street parking, at least on public streets. And so we believe we've captured what the the council's requested in terms of the the amount of parking. And so that's where the the meat of this is found. And then the the last change is actually one that the planning commission requests that's related. And so if I go down to, this is the section of the code that deals with design standards for any type of multifamily housing. And so we already have a provision in the code that requires a two-car garage for a townhome. However, there's no minimum size or actual dimension in that. And so what this would do is state that the interior dimension would need to be at least twenty by twenty. And that within that twenty by twenty space, there can't be any encroachments. So there we have seen situations where you'll have a garage, but then they'll have a stair leading into the unit that encroaches into that. And so this is saying you can't have things like water heaters or stairs lead or that would encroach into that minimum twenty by twenty space. So in in summary, we have the townhomes that are defined. We've added the standards of a driveway with a minimum width and depth, as well as additional parking for those units that aren't on a public street where there's parking available. And then we're also including these standards for minimum interior dimensions that prohibit any kind of encroachments. And so that's a that's a summary of the ordinance change.
Hey, any comments from the council?
Just so I'm reading it right, Steve, it's for townhomes and twin homes?
Correct, as well as single-family homes. And so we're grouping those three together. And the thought with the single family, most of the time you're going to have a a single-family home that would be on a public street anyway. On rare occasion, you might see one that's accessed from an alley. And so this that would still apply like in the case of an alley as well.
Great. So Steve, I'm not really comfortable with the stipulation that if there's no public street, because I thought our goal was to have no public street on street parking for these developments. So whether there's a street next but nearby or not, I would rather not have on-street parking. So I wasn't really excited about that stipulation.
So so Mayor, if I understand, so your your preference would be to just say point seven five regardless of what street it's on?
Correct, just because we're burdening everybody else with the on-street parking. And I think each development needs to be self-contained, whether it's an apartment complex. And do we or a duplex, fourplex, whatever.
And and certainly we can make that change if that's the the desire of the council. The the reason for that differentiation was that, at least in in the conversation when we were reviewing that previous townhome development, comments at the time were, well, if these were public streets, people could park on them. Or even on on thirty two hundred west, in that case, there was no, there's no shoulders, there's no no space to park. And so the concern was if there's no place to park on the street, there needed to be additional parking in it added along with the driveways and the garage spaces.
Yeah, I just hate to see all of our public streets end up like thirty one hundred was again, and just wall-to-wall car. It's not safe, in my opinion, for children running out in the street between cars. I mean, there's just so many different obstacles with on-street parking. And they are public streets, not private streets. So for me personally, for all of our developments, apartments, all of those, I would like it all to be interior parking. And then how do I keep losing this? Anyway, does anybody else have an opinion on that one?
I agree.
That makes sense. I mean, the parking over by six, I know that's an apartment complex, so different situation, but there are so much, so many cars on that street, you can't.
So I'm trying to understand what you're asking. Are you saying that we should make sure that streets aren't big enough to have parking or?
No, I would. And so that brings up another suggestion that Councilmember Norfeld brought up on Saturday or Friday. Do you want to explain to him what you were thinking of on the streets, interior streets?
Oh, so we want in in the future, so in our strategic planning meeting, we we talked about having private roads in new developments. And we want to avoid those as much as possible, especially when when there's individual homeowners, not just one owner for the whole development.
So we've just, I mean, we've had a lot of people come in and complain their HOAs aren't saving the money, taking care of their streets. I don't know what your, that's what I've gotten publicly. I don't know what you've gotten.
Yeah, and I mean, private road is no benefit that I can see to anybody except the developer. And it and it puts a burden on the city because we have to deal with neighborhoods that might be deteriorating. We can't fix the roads. Or or residents who have to who are double taxed.
With their HOA.
They pay the same amount of taxes that everybody who has a public road pays, but they also have to pay for their own roads.
Correct. So for this one, I would suggest we put that in. Well, I don't know, this is just the parking part. So move on to the actual streets later. Having no more private streets in our city so that each development, we can actually get in and service them.
That's something for a future.
Right, that's for a future. I'm just putting it in Steve's brain.
We've already done it, ma'am.
Oh, great. All right, because just to side note while I remember, the eleven-year-old girl that stepdad took her out driving last week, did anybody hear about that? She ran into a house. The house she ran into threw a fence into the house, was in a PUD or HOA. So the police could not issue her a ticket. And he's just on his own for fixing his house. And I don't know if that's a true interpretation, that you cannot go in and give a ticket in an HOA, but that's what they're telling him. So that's just another thing. If it's if it's a public street, we wouldn't have those issues. So.
I'm still trying to understand what you're asking for.
So no on-street parking outside the townhome development.
You you I mean, not that you can't park on outside the development. You can't use that as your parking for the development, right?
Correct.
It's like the thirty-two, they couldn't use the bank to the north or thirty-two as their parking requirement.
Now, I might not be understanding. What I understood you saying, you don't want to park on the street anywhere, inside or outside.
Well, and if it was inside the development and it was a public road and they were parking on it.
Right.
I don't have an issue with that because they're not spilling out into the public, public road.
Outside of the development.
Yeah, outside of their development. I don't think they should be allowed to park on our major streets.
Is that how you understood that, Steve?
Yes, except that, I mean, they could park internally, but what I also understood was that even if, let's say, they had public streets internal to their development, we wouldn't count that towards their parking spaces that are required. So they could park on the street, but it wouldn't count as parking.
As their parking for their unit, each unit, correct?
Right. So that so they'd have to have essentially four point seven five stalls per unit, not including any on-street parking.
Correct. And then if we change the on-street, I mean, the streets to only be public, then the on-street parking is not as big a deal inside of their units that have the width for a fire truck to still get down? Does that make, is that a yes or a no, or?
They can, they can get them. The standard works right now. This is just about how you guys want it, from a parking standpoint. A fire truck can get down any road right now. And they can function, whether there's cars parked on the street.
Does that mean damaging and probably get down there?
Sometimes, if you're parked illegally. If you're parked in front of a hydrant, if you're parked out into the lane, if you're, you know, parked in some way that would actually block the, but yes, the standards.
If just a standard-sized road would work just fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and again, fine is a definition that some people agree with or don't agree with. So I, oh, go ahead.
What's the wording that you would change in this amendment?
I would get rid of the.
I'm looking at page thirty-two of the ordinance.
Thirty-two. So the part I would have changed is
It says dwelling.
Not adjacent to a public street with no more than two lanes. So it's the line up there in that first paragraph. So they're making the stipulation, if there's a public street, how I'm reading this is if there's a public street, then you can park on that.
And they're not required to add an additional point seven five.
Yeah. And I think it should be, they shouldn't be outside of their development. So however we phrase that, if we, especially if April, when we look at the private street, public street issue, if we change them to all public, then it would just say, keep them self-contained.
What would, how would you change this?
Delete the words, units that are not adjacent to public street with more, no more than two lanes, shall be shall also provide. Now, that one says you can. So what I'm saying is if the opposite occurs, so if you're adjacent to a public street.
With a wide enough road to, I mean.
Yeah, right now, they're not wide enough. But when we look at your issue, then they might all be wide enough. Does that make? No?
I I still don't understand what, how you want to change this.
I want to take out the public street.
So maybe I could take an attempt here. I think what I'm understanding is it would read dwelling units shall also provide an additional point seven five spaces per unit, period.
Nothing related to outside streets.
Right. There's there's just no reference to streets at all. It's just saying you have to provide point seven five in addition to the driveway in the garage.
So why don't we just change the, how many spaces per unit to two point seven five instead of putting this sentence in here? That's what you're suggesting?
Yep.
That's a clean. It says you don't think that they should ever park on the street.
On the street outside of their development. So.
What if their development has a public street with more than two lanes? So in other words, wide enough for them to have parking that's legal.
Right.
In front of their house or on the side of their house. Do we still need to require two point seven five spots in their driveways?
We do not need the extra seven five if it's a public street. And that's why I was hoping we could look at this and the street, the public-private street issue at the same time. But it's not until like April, right?
Right.
Yeah.
This is saying, the way it's written right now, dwelling units that are not adjacent to a public street with no more than two lanes shall also provide an additional point seven five spaces per unit. I think this is accomplishing what you are suggesting.
But if they are adjacent to a public street.
What does adjacent mean, Steve? Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
The the idea would just, it's right, it's either if it's a unit that has a garage that's front, the garage is in front, the garage would access the public street. Or in the case of an alley-loaded unit, it actually would have to be that the front of the townhome would be facing a public street. So basically, one side of the townhome is facing a public street.
And that's the adjacent street. It's it's the street that the that the unit is on.
Right now, it may, in the case of a an alley-loaded townhome, you may have a a public street in front and an alley in the back, for example. That does happen on occasion.
So this is not referring to public streets that are outside the development?
It it could be. We we have scenarios where there are both public and private streets. So it could be that a townhome, again, some townhomes in a development are on a public street and others are not on a public street.
This development that we reviewed two months ago on thirty-two, had some parking spaces within the development, visitor park. If we change that to be all public parking, that probably would be less likely that the developer would put in public parking spaces, you know, on our streets. I I don't know, Steve, how does that work if we have a developer put in visitor parking on our streets? Is it, is it, you know, street parking or we're parking lots that are kind of built into the development? Just a question about, maybe, you know, going back to your thought of parking and this.
Well, and.
Consider together.
And I'm sorry, the adjacent to me meant like outside the development on thirty-two hundred. So I may be understanding it incorrectly, which the simpler we can make it, the developers and I will not have any questions.
Right.
Right. So it the the intention here is that we would look at it on a each unit. So if if a particular unit is is right next to a public street, then that unit would not need to provide the point seven five. If another unit is not next to a public street, then that one would need to provide the point seven five. So again, it just depends on the location of each unit and whether they are or or not next to a public street. At least that that was the intention of how it's worded.
See, and I drive through Lake Park where there are some townhomes there that they park on the public street instead of behind in their alley load. And it's still that same safety concerns and narrow drive. But those are an exceptional annoyance to me anyway, so it's all right. Um, the other thing, do the townhomes ever seem to charge for interior parking? I know we have some apartment complexes that do charge for interior parking.
Yeah, I've I've never, I've never seen a scenario where an HOA is charging for, like their residents for parking. I've not seen that.
Okay. Now, that's what's, I believe that's what was explained to me, was causing some of the parking issues in front of the apartments in Lake Park, Lake Park. If we, if we look at that one again, we need to make sure there's no interior or fees for interior parking.
And we do have that provision for for any kind of rental product. That is a requirement in the code now is that they can't charge for parking.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they can't charge above, it has to be included in the rent, basically.
Okay, no special fee.
Right.
Steve, is there a minimum width, road width for city roads where they can park on the side of the of the road?
Right. So a standard residential street is twenty-nine feet of asphalt. And and that that's what we were anticipating here is that for a residential street, you'd have the twenty-nine feet of asphalt, which would allow for on-street parking. But again, looking at the example, the project on thirty-two hundred west, because that road is is striped the way it is, there's really no place for any kind of parking. And so a a typical residential street, we would consider two lanes. And so you would have, you'd have space within that twenty-nine feet for parking, but a road like thirty-two hundred west, there really isn't that space.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to our next public hearing. Is it still a public hearing? And it is application SA eight twenty twenty-one. And this will be Mr. Lehman, and he is joining us via Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Lehman with the Community Development Department. Appreciate Eric Bunderson bringing up this little presentation. So this is a subdivision that's located in the Lake Park project, approximately forty-nine ninety west. And it's a corner that sits on Lake Park Boulevard and Parkway Boulevard. Uh, the property that's highlighted in red here is the vacant piece of property that is in question. While we're on this slide, this was a two-lot subdivision, a large piece highlighted in red. And the building to the east of that is the corporate offices for the Deseret First Federal Credit Union. So the initial subdivision was a two-lot division. The request from the applicant is to take and divide the large piece in red into two additional lots. So the next slide, we just have a couple of illustrations to show you. So this first slide is the the corporate office of Deseret First Federal Credit Union was built on lot two of Lake Park Place. The next slide is an illustration that looks to the northwest across the the corner of the property. That is the Discover Card Building in the distance. And the next slide is looking to the southwest across the property. There will be two new buildings proposed for this new subdivision. The next slide is looking back to the north. You can see the Home Two Suites Hotel in the distance. This access is a shared access with the credit union that comes in off of Parkway Boulevard. And the last slide, I believe, is the subdivision plat. So this is how they are proposing to divide the property. The curved line separating lot one A and one B will be their primary access coming in off of Lake Park Boulevard. They will have a shared access and parking agreement for development of this property. That is our report.
Hey, any questions, comments? Looks pretty easy. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you.
We will now go to resolution twenty-two dash twenty-five. And Mr. Welch in person. Mr. Pyle, did you have anything on this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Forgot that the microphone works no matter where you send it. So anyway, um, thank you for this opportunity. This is the, there's two companion resolutions that go with this. This is financing for the purchase of a new fire truck. And Chief Evans will be talking about the need for that truck and the specs and things like that. However, this is, this is one of those discussions where it's, you know, the chicken or the egg first. Do you approve the financing before you look at the truck or do you look at the truck before you do the financing? Uh look at the truck or do you look at the truck before you do the financing? So in this case, uh we brought the financing to you, uh just let you know what this represents. The uh Finance Department went out and solicited a number of different financing option bids from. Uh several institutions, actually, we had over six. Qualified responses of those responses, Zion's Bank leasing. Municipal finance organization came back with the most competitive and least cost for this financing. This is a ten-year lease. Uh the term matches the approximate lease, uh the approximate useful life of the truck. And they usually keep for a little bit longer, but we make sure that financing doesn't go longer than that, that truck will be in service. Uh the cost on this, uh the rate is two point one eight percent. And the payments will be, there's a, there's an error in your issue paper, I apologize for that, I'll have that fixed, we had sixty months, this is actually. One hundred and twenty months. Um that's. Uh this is the first one that we've done with Zion's Bank. Uh they were very aggressive in making sure they got the best rates possible for us, and that's. Kind of a summary of the financing, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Mr. Welch?
If it's a hundred and twenty months, what the? The payments be like half of what they are here, or or is the total fiscal impact double?
Appreciate you asking that, the payment is correct, that fifty four thousand three sixty. And um those payments will be coming from the ambulance fund from revenues there. So that's, so does that answer the question for you?
So up at the top, the fiscal impact, will that be more in the two million range?
The total fiscal impact, that's the total of the uh of all the payments, including the interest.
So twice a year, we pay fifty four.
Twice a year, we pay the fifty four that comes up to, I don't have, well, hundred and eight. Multiplied by the ten years comes out to the one point oh eight seven million.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Yeah, thank you. We now have resolution twenty two dash twenty six, the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment. And we have Chief Evans here.
Afternoon, I uh. Just a little bit of money. Fire trucks are expensive. There there's a couple of reasons for this purchase. The one engine that we do have out of Station Seventy Six right now. Has actually. Been out of service. In twelve months, it's been out of service for eight months. We. Nobody can figure out what's wrong with it, we've had engineers from Detroit, we've had everybody. Right now, for most of the time, that station has been running an engine that's a two thousand and one. The engine's about twenty years old, it's not going to go much farther. The reason we're asking for a ladder truck instead of an engine um to place out there. Is the ISO rating that we have in West Valley City currently is an ISO rating of two. We have been told that with putting another aerial unit in that area. Within six months, our ISO rating will go to a class one city. Right now, there is one in the state of Utah, and there's only two hundred and thirty in the United States. Uh what the ISO rating does is it's. How a lot of the businesses and even some of the homeowners' fire insurance are based on. Your ISO rating. So. They're uh in between some of the steps. Um I've I've asked what? What's the savings, I mean, they they can't guarantee it because there's, you know, how many insurance companies are there? Usually, it's between three and six percent savings on your fire insurance, dropping to a class one city. So that's the reason of not buying an engine and buying an aerial unit for that area. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's not drop to a class one city, let's go up to a class one city.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah, sorry.
Any other questions?
So it looks like we're gonna purchase a ladder truck or possibly sell two?
Probably one, we'll probably get rid of one, we we need a reserve engine. And right now. I can't tell you the two thousand and twelve, it's it's been so unreliable that we may have to, I mean, right now. I'm gonna knock on some wood, it's been about a week, it's been in service, and so I had, but it. Here here again, it's just. Nobody can figure out what's wrong with it.
So one or the other, though, will downgrade one of them to reserve status and sell the other one.
Oh, so we're gonna sell the twelve?
Probably.
Okay, maybe.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I mean, you know, it's. The two thousand and one still runs, but you know, after, one of the problems we run into when a truck gets to be. About twenty one years old. Manufacturer don't make parts for them anymore. I mean, we've actually. In some of our trucks, we've actually had to try to go out and see if somebody would manufacture. A part for us, because they don't, they don't stock them anymore, after twenty years. It's like, no, we don't stock.
So what is the average life on a engine?
Um, you know, the the ten years, it, you know, if you look at it, go going about ten years. Uh you you can do it frontline, and then probably another four or five years as a reserve unit. The one issue we have in West Valley is we're busy, so you know, we put a lot of miles on these on these trucks, I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it, I mean, we've run a lot of calls. And so, you know, it it's safe to say ten years, I mean. Like I say, for eight months out of the year, we're running an engine that's twenty years old, so it's not the best, but we're doing it.
But even the twelve is on its last leg, if it was running properly.
Yeah, it's pretty much on its last leg, it's running properly.
Is there a a big market for used engines like?
No, no, I mean.
So classifieds?
You you know, you, I I, you kind of make it, you kind of make a joke about that, but usually they go to an auction. And I know the last couple are the, one of the last ones we sold, there was a uh. Don't quote me on this, it was, it was a farmer that bought it. And uh they just take it out in the fields and water, because it has a pump and five hundred gallons of water in it. Nobody really buys them for a classic car. You don't see many just running down the road.
Is there every once in a while, though, like a small city will buy it?
Yeah, there there's some sometimes, we we've had one that uh. One of our ladder trucks, we sold to.
Washington Terrace.
Well, thank you, Washington Terrace.
Okay. Okay. Any other? Okay, thank you. So now we have resolution twenty two dash twenty seven. Authorize an interlocal agreement with. Salt Lake for the transfer of.
County.
Yeah, Salt Lake County. That's right, Hillsdale Park, and we have. Mr. Jason Erickson with Parks Department coming up to talk to us.
Hello, Mayor and Council, uh Jason Erickson with Parks and Recreation, so yes, this is an interlocal agreement. Uh between us and Salt Lake County, uh they're looking to quit claim us, Hillsdale Park, which is um. About seven, seven point six acres of land there, um it is tied uh to. Uh land and water conservation funds, which is our federal funding, so it will have to be continually used as a park. Otherwise, it will revert back to Salt Lake County, so if we wanted to. We couldn't sell any, couldn't sell it off to like put businesses on or something like that, or our homes, right, so it has to remain as a park, but. But for the cost of ten dollars, they want to uh give us the park to uh for us to maintain and take care of uh in in perpetuity, so. So anyway, we would like to do that, uh we think that we have a little better. We're better able to maintain, we have people that are in the city all the time and able to take care of it. So.
Okay, do you mind telling us the location?
That's thirty two hundred south and thirty two hundred west.
And the county has allowed it to be many different things.
Yes.
So, any questions for Jason on this one?
So we have more land that we need, are responsible for, but they didn't give us the. Funds for ongoing maintenance.
That is correct.
There used to be a community garden on the tennis courts. That's still there?
It is still there, yes, and that is actually operated by a private, by a private entity, well, that, they're in it, we have a contract with them, so it's, yeah, they're not private, so that they. Have people that that contact them and and still do the plot, so yeah, it is still there.
But it's not on the tennis courts anymore, they moved it to the north.
Yeah, it's on the north, the northwest corner of the park, yeah.
I think they got too many complaints, people down there liked their tennis court. So.
They did change one of their tennis courts to parking. So there's, yeah, so they still have one tennis court, but it kind of has pickleball lines on it as well, but um. But and the other one, they changed into a into parking.
And is that for the garden?
For the garden and the tennis court, I think.
Parking, okay. I hadn't noticed the parking, so thank you. There we go, any other questions, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have resolution twenty two dash twenty eight. And we're looking at awarding a contract to R C Enterprise Paving and Construction and. With the. Public Works Department, Kobe Wilson will join us on Zoom.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm glad to be with you today, we uh had a couple bid openings um on January eighteenth for projects that we are. Getting ready to get started on, let me share my screen here so that you can see the. Limits of the first project. Is that coming through for you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, this is a sidewalk project on thirty five hundred south, so the city received about a hundred thousand dollars from the state, from their Safe Sidewalks program. Um that hundred thousand dollars requires a minimum of a twenty five percent match from the city. And the project limits for uh this project, oh, we were uh given funding for. Keyboard here, zoom in here on this for you, so you can see it a little bit better. Um is this gap that we have on thirty five hundred south on the north side, this is fifty two hundred west here, so we're. Basically going to be filling in this gap on the north side with sidewalk. And uh making a few minor drainage improvements that we need to make at this intersection as well, along with some pedestrian ramps on the south side here, so. Uh kind of a small project, but a good one to get done, we opened bids on January eighteenth, we had three. Uh bidders on this project, the lowest responsible bidder was R C Enterprise Paving and Construction. Um this is the same contractor that that did Hawkeye Street not too long ago, that was the first time we worked with them on Hawkeye Street, and we were. Happy with their work and uh impressed with their performance, we're glad to see them get another project in the city. Um so we would recommend that we award this contract to um. R C Enterprise Paving and Construction uh for the amount of a hundred and forty five thousand dollars in change and to authorize the public works department to spend up to a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, and Kobe, you have the next one, which is our Acme Construction. For the pedestrian ramp project.
Correct. Yes, so this was another project that we opened up on January eighteenth. Um again, we received three bids on this project, the lowest being Acme Construction, Acme has done several projects throughout the city. Um over the years, uh their bid came in. Um at. All right, switch screens here, is this? It was. It's the wrong. Issue paper, see here. Two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars is what Acme came in at, um this project is being, two hundred thousand of this project is being funded with C D V G money. Um and the rest is coming from classy roads. So uh these bed ramps, as you can see, are in various locations throughout the city, focusing on areas that do not have existing curb uh cuts. Or areas that are maybe near uh schools or parks, so that's kind of where these areas were identified for now. And we uh look forward to getting Acme out here and get started on this, so our recommendations for this contract to Acme to authorize the bulk works department to spend up to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, Kobe.
Thank you.
So now we have our resolution twenty two dash thirty, which is three click, quick claim deeds. But I'll let Mr. Johnson with Public Works explain.
Thank you, this is kind of a unique uh request that we're asking of the council, I'll give you a little bit of background. Uh to uh to help understand why we're doing what we're doing, so in two thousand and five. The city did a roadway project out in this, those salvage yards around twenty three hundred south and fifty seven hundred west or so. Um and they they, at that time, they were dirt roads, they were unpaved. Um and the city, there was an S I D, a Special Improvement District that was put together, and a roadway project was built. Just with, in cooperation with the property owners out there, and so that particular subdivision, the plat was recorded in eighteen eighty nine. And um. There's actually quite a bit of discrepancy and. Irregularity from a survey standpoint, as you may imagine, um survey technology is different today, and and we're definitely a lot. Tighter in the things that we can do, but. But uh really, if if you measure from the south, you get one distance, and if you measure from the north, you get a different distance, you have a different placement of the road and and of property lines and improvements. And so in two thousand and five, when we dedicate, when we built this road. We measured from the south and and realized that. There was, there was land that on the north side of the road that needed to be deeded to the city that was part of the roadway. And so we worked with property owners on the north side of the road, and there's three properties there that. That are between fifty seven hundred west and fifty six hundred west that deeded property to the city in about thirty feet of property. And in a, in order for us to build the the public roadway improvements. Well, we had a a gentleman, a property owner on the north side of the road, Mr. Stephen Minor, come to the city a few months ago, requesting. That uh the city, you know, he he, if you go to the county's. Website, the 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 map, the property like property website. You can look at the aerial photographs, and the way that the county has the properties laid out. Um his property, or excuse me, those parcels that are owned by the city now. Uh deeded by those property owners, actually. Sit, you know, hi- his building sits on the property that is owned by the city. And so. We uh hired a surveyor to figure out what's really going on before we came to you to to request that you, that we give these parcels back as he's requesting. And it is, it was his opinion, and it's really the opinion of the Recorder's Office and the Surveyor's Office, that. The, these roadway improvements, that these, that these parcels um should have been measured from the north. Because really, if you you get a different distance if you measure from the north versus the south. And at a different location, I guess, and so um. This uh particular, and so anyways, long story short. Though, we we agree now with the placement of. Well, with with how this is surveyed and and measured, and we would recommend that the city council, that the council authorized the city to give back these these. Parcels back to the adjoining property owners on the north side of the road. So. It's a long story, and if you have questions, I'd be happy to to try to answer them.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Good job. For a clear as mud situation, you did very well.
Clear as mud.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under our new business, we have um application S M I twelve. Two thousand twenty one. And Steve Lehman on Zoom is going to join us. Explain this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Chris Pang is the applicant on this request for property located at thirty nine oh nine. South forty eight hundred west. This property is on R one eight, but the property in question is over a half acre in size, point five one acre in size. And the request is to subdivide the property to create an additional building lot. So we took just a a few illustrations for you, the next slide is just a zoomed in version. Uh one thing that I would like to point out here is that you're able to see the home positions sort of toward the center of the lot, really right on what would be the property line that divides the property equally. Due to a a setback issue, if the property were to be divided, Mr. Payne approached the Board of Adjust- Mr. Payne approached the Board of Adjustment and petitioned the board for a variance, which was granted that allows the subdivision to move forward. So the variance was for a frontage variance on the north side where the large open space is located. We took a couple of photos. Mr. Payne purchased this red brick home. And because of the outside condition of the home, which is of the brick, they wanted to keep the home intact. You can see the dumpsters there in the driveway. They've gone in and gutted the entire inside of the home and have fixed up the inside and will be doing some other improvements this spring. So they would like to keep the existing home and will sell that and then build a new home just to the north of the home that you see in this illustration. The next slide is looking from the, looking toward the southeast where those trees are located will be where the new lot is. And then the last slide that we have a picture anyway, you'll notice that there is a drive approach that was located on the east side of forty-eight hundred west. This was done as a city project in the early two thousands. So I believe at the time it was anticipated that this property would likely develop in the future. So a curb cut and approach was installed, which actually aids in the development of this property. And the last slide is the subdivision itself. It's pretty straightforward. Lot one is about just under ninety-two hundred square feet. And lot two is slightly over thirteen thousand square feet. So in summary, this application will divide the existing property to create one new building lot. And that is our report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Or comments? Because I thought subdivision name was pretty spectacular.
Yeah, I asked the, the planning commission had the same question. I asked the developer about the name, and he said in his company, he says, when they find a property, they like to move quickly, so they like to shake and bake. So a little bit unique, for sure.
Agree. Okay. Seeing no questions or comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Pyle.
Ma'am, these are all warranty deeds temporary construction easements associated with the same project. There's no large dollar amounts that are of issue or anything like that. So
Just normal.
Right. So unless there are any questions individually, we don't have any more to say about them.
Okay. We'll go to our unfinished business and turn the time over to Nancy Day. She's in person for our fitness center fee conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. So these are some of the questions that you asked last week about that I just wanted to to address about the fitness center and then also the golf course and senior, or some of the other things we're doing within our department. And you should have received the information as an attachment for tonight. So first, let's talk about the fitness center. And and what I've done here is I've just kind of given you some educational information on what, what's happening out there typically, just for your understanding on that. Just because that's what it is does not mean that that's what we need to do, but I just wanted you to have that information. So as you can see, you've got the facility in the first column and then our current and the current senior definition for those facilities, as well as military and veteran discount was also brought up. So there, there's a column for that as well. So the top is the family fitness center. As you know, current age definition for seniors is sixty-two. And there currently is not any military or veteran discount. So you're aware of that. If you look down, so Salt Lake County facilities, their age is sixty-two to seventy-nine. The reason they stop at seventy-nine is because if you're eighty or above, then the membership is free. They have a, have a setup for for ages eighty and up. They are subsidized for those memberships through the county budget. And they also don't have a military or veteran discount. Kerns Oakley Park Fitness Center is the only one that is fifty-five and older. They also do not have a military or veteran discount. Murray City or the Park Center is sixty plus and so on, so on. You can see with Cottonwood Heights Recreation Center, there are sixty-two. No military or veterans, South Davis and both Provo City, both of those are ages sixty and up. I put an asterisk, as you could see by the Salt Lake County facilities, Cottonwood Heights Recreation Center and South Davis, because those three facilities also offer a discount for individuals with disabilities. Two of the three, it's equal to the senior membership. So with your proof of disability, you would pay the senior rate. And South Davis, it's actually the disability rate's a little bit cheaper than the senior rate. So those are options that that you can always look at. So I put the proposed changes. This is an idea. This is just to kind of give you a general idea of what it would do for the revenues and what we're talking about. So if the fitness center were to change the senior jet definition to ages fifty-five, we looked at all memberships with the exception of family memberships. But we looked at individual and couple memberships and how many individuals it affected between the ages of fifty-five and sixty-one. And there are seventy-eight in that age range. And so the potential loss of revenue annually would be just under nine thousand dollars a year to make that change. And then we also looked at what we could do for the military and veteran population within our community. This is a little bit trickier, right? Because we don't have those figures right now. But if we were to establish a ten percent off discount, which is typically what you might see at like a Home Depot or or something like that. Then, and in that case, I know Councilman Fatise Manu asked this question, would it be just the individual? We looked at it for all the memberships. So if if you're a veteran or in the military, whether you bought an individual, a couple, or a family membership, you would get that ten percent discount. We anticipate, and this could be low, it could be high, we don't know, but if twenty percent of our membership base had a veteran or military member in that membership, then we would lose about eighteen thousand dollars a year. So obviously, if it's higher than twenty percent, it would be a higher loss. And so on, you kind of figure that out. And then we also did the same thing for daily drop-ins. So for a daily admission, same thing, if we did twenty percent of the daily drop-in users are within that category, at that ten percent, we'd lose just over five thousand dollars in a year's time. What we did to come up with the the rates on that is we looked at how we finished in those categories in the last fiscal year, but then we also went back and averaged in the two thousand eighteen nineteen, so it was pre-COVID. So that you would, and we averaged that. So you would get a little bit truer picture of what we're talking about, since our numbers aren't up to where they were a couple of years ago before the pandemic. Are there, are there any questions on the fitness center before I move on to the other areas? Yes.
A question I didn't ask you earlier, which came to mind. I know it's a little tentative to establish the percentages of the population that might take advantage of the military veteran discount. When you were coming up with those numbers, how were you figuring on establishing veteran status?
So as far as what they would need to prove, okay, so they would show either their ID, as you know, they have a military ID or a veteran ID, or they would need to bring in their DD two fourteen with the driver's license or something like that. And then it would be put into the software so that it would be in there permanently. And then as far as the drop-in, just a note, so I appreciate you asking that. With the drop-in, we would do the same thing. Most likely, what we would do, and it would equal that ten percent because of how the software works, it's easier for a daily admission to have a set rate. So we would take what the current rate is, drop it down that ten percent, and then we would have a veteran and military discount. And so that they wouldn't have to show those every single time they came, we would enter them in the software and it would reflect that every time that they came to pay the daily admission. Okay, is that good? Okay. Well, let's move on to some of the other facilities then. I have golf at the top on the second page. And as you can see, we're right in line with age sixty and on over for seniors with the county courses, Sandy, Murray. All the golf courses are the same. We are the only ones, however, that offer a military and veteran discount. And so we're, we're really proud of that. Senior centers, pretty much the same. You'll see that Murray City is fifty-five and over, but everybody else is sixty and over. Murray runs there as very independently of Salt Lake County. And as I discussed a couple of weeks ago about the the food program, since they run that independently, it's a little easier for them. With Salt Lake County, with the food service that that they provide to us, they get federal funding for that, and it's only for ages sixty and over. So it would cost more, and I think I put that on there. Yeah, the fifty-five to fifty-nine year olds, it would be a higher donation amount that would need to be covered because Salt Lake County would not get reimbursed for that. So that would come back to the city. And of course, I don't know the exact numbers for that because, you know, because of who goes to the Harmon Senior Recreation Center, we don't, we don't have those counts as far as age goes. And then on the arts and culture, very consistent with other performing arts centers, the theater, for example, there's no discounts for seniors, there's no discounts for military and veterans. The only thing is a couple of them will have a children's price, like you would see at maybe a movie theater kind of thing, but none of them offer discounts beyond that. And then as far as the events and programs that we offer, we don't have senior rates or military rates for swim lessons or those types of things. However, there are a lot of events and programs that are held at the Harmon Senior Recreation Center that are either free or very, very, very minimal cost for the seniors. So we do provide those for them. And
Back to the fitness center.
Yes.
Ever seen signs for the Silver Sneaker Program? Can you explain what that is and does it relate to the seniors?
Yes, excellent question, absolutely. So the Silver Sneakers, and there's a Silver and Fit also out there, they're very similar, and they are subsidized to the senior through certain insurance companies. So if you're on Medicare, but you have a supplemental insurance through one of the other companies out there, can't think of some off the top of my head, then they will pay for you to use the fitness center. So we bill off of the use. So the counts, you know, as people check in, there's counts that are made. We can bill to their program, the Silver Sneaker Program. They reimburse the family fitness center. The senior does not have to pay for their membership. It's an excellent program. And quite a few, I don't, I don't, I apologize, I don't have the number with me, but quite a few of our seniors actually participate in that program. It's really good.
You know, the age record is for that.
I I want to say sixty-five. I, it's not fifty-five, I know that. It might be sixty, but I can certainly find out for you. But I, I know it's when they're on Medicare and they have the supplemental with it. That's why I want to say sixty-five, but I could check.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a side note, I don't know if you remember, I emailed you probably six or seven years ago about the military.
That was you.
And her, her suggestion was, well, I support that, but you'll need to take it before the city council. So I, instead, I joined the city council.
It just took seven years. No, actually, though, there are several that do ask us that from time to time, you know, and yeah, we are, we are supportive of that. But of course, we have to be fiscally responsible as well and look at the bottom line. So.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Nancy? So as a policy, do we want to talk about if we want to incorporate this? Do you want to think about it for a week and then come back to it? What is your desire as a council?
This is Jake. I think in order for me to kind of wrap my head a little better around this, and thank you for the characterization, Nancy, I think I'm more interested in the revenue loss that this presents and kind of some strategic planning around how do we make that whole, or how do we adjust services or what that looks like if we as a council were to request that this be implemented? I don't know, even just the fitness center, but I guess across the board, because I did hear perhaps some inconsistency around the age that we consider for seniors, as well as which facilities offer a military or veteran discount and which ones don't. I would just like to learn more about the fiscal consequences and some of the planning around maintaining the level of service we offer with that kind of reduction in income.
So did you do any projections of what we would have to raise at the fitness center? We would have to raise everybody up fifty cents to make up for this or?
No, I did not. But but that would be pretty simple math. I could, yeah, send that out to everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, would you mind just sending out an email?
You bet, you bet.
And I don't know if we wanted on all of it or just the fitness center. If it's easy, great. If not, just let's worry about the fitness center first.
My, my recommendation, if you'd like that, is I think we're just, we're right in line with what we're doing at the golf courses.
Okay.
And the senior center because of our partnership with Salt Lake County. With that, so the fitness center to me would be the one we may want to look at.
Okay.
So in in addition to that, so as we talked about it earlier, and just to further clarify, so if I remember correctly, so your recommendation would be then if they did choose to make a modification and be to the fitness center only, move it to the sixty as the definition of the age, is that right?
Yes, that is also one of my recommendations, because sixty also seems to be consistent. There's a couple more that are sixty-two. But the nice part about that is then all of our facilities are at sixty. So West Valley City is consistent across the board on that, which would change these numbers, right? This loss of revenue would be less because we calculated this at fifty-five. So I can send out those new figures tomorrow.
Okay.
And as far as the military discount goes, if you did it that way, then really the fitness center would be the only one that would be affected fiscally. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, anything else? Hey, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to turn the time back over to Kobe Wilson of the Public Works Department, and he is going to give us an update on forty-seven hundred south project.
All right, well, you have probably all noticed a little bit of construction activity out on forty-seven hundred south. So it's probably a good time that we provide an update. We've been asked to give you an update on where things sit with our forty-seven hundred south project. As most of you know, this is a joint project between Kerns and between Kerns Metro Township and West Valley City. The majority of this project is actually in, in Kerns, about seventy percent of this is in Kerns. Pretty much the only portions that are in West Valley are from forty-eight hundred west to fifty-six hundred west along the north side. And then as the road sweeps down to the south here, all through this stretch between basically the canal and close to the family dollar parcel there, that is all, the entire roadway's in Kerns there. And then as it sweeps back up to the north, it enters back into West Valley City as we approach the four thousand west intersection. So that's just kind of give you a lay of the land as to how this project is split. It is about a seventy-thirty split between West Valley and Kerns. The scope of this project, as most of you know, this is a full-depth reconstruction project, so it's going to be very similar to forty-one hundred south, where it is complete remote removal of the existing pavement section and the reconstruction of a new pavement section along with new curb gutter sidewalk and and all the bells and whistles that come with the new road. A couple of things to highlight on this project from forty-eight hundred west to four thousand west, we will be adding an additional eastbound lane, so there will be some widening in this portion. Most of that wide widening has been shipped to the north into Welcome Park at the request of, basically, that was Kerns Metro Township in Salt Lake County that recommended that rather than going south and into the, into the properties on the south side of the road. So there will be some widening between four thousand and forty-eight hundred west to for that additional lane as well as some bike lanes. West of forty-eight hundred west, we will also have bike lanes. There will, it will still be a three-lane section out here, but we will have buffered bike lanes out to fifty-six fifty-six hundred west. Speaking of the fifty-six hundred west intersection, there's a lot of Um, speaking of the fifty-six hundred west intersection, uh, there's a lot of, uh, westbound left turn movements there. So that intersection will be getting dual left turn lanes. And this railroad crossing here will be a complete reconstruction, uh, as well and upgraded and new railroad crossing. The other major item of work is over here on the Utah Salt Lake Canal, uh, that the existing bridge will be removed and a new concrete box culvert will be, uh, put there over the culvert. So that's the big picture scope. In addition to the, the project's scope, West Valley City has chosen to uh, do a couple of betterments with this project. Um, as you all know, we have uh, approved an agreement with Rocky Mountain Power to bury the overhead power lines from forty-eight hundred west out to fifty-six hundred west. Um, in addition to Rocky Mountain Power, you can see from the picture here, there are several overhead utilities, um, including Comcast, Zayo and Utopia. All of those will be going underground as well. Uh, this work is actually started. Rocky Mountain Power is on site. They showed up last week and they'll be there for the next couple of months. Um, working on getting the, the power lines buried. So that's one of the betterments that West Valley City is including with the project. In addition, we are going to add some privacy wall to forty-seven hundred South. This exhibit shows two different sections of that privacy wall. This area outlined here in red, that's just east of fifty-four hundred west. This area was actually identified in the environmental document as essentially needing a noise wall. So this, this wall here was going to be required uh, regardless of, of what West Valley, um, regard, irregardless of the, the betterment from West Valley City. So the red area was going to go in no matter what. And then we are going to do a betterment, uh, on this blue section here. So we have consistent wall uh, throughout the corridor and clean it up a little bit. You've all seen, uh, twenty-seven hundred west and forty-seven hundred south. Um, it's a pretty good improvement. If I go back to the previous slide, you can see some of the fences and walls that we're dealing with now. So it'll be nice to get some of that stuff cleaned up with a nice, um, a nice privacy wall. Um, in addition to the wall, we'll be doing the street trees as we have been doing on other recent projects. And so overall we'll have some pretty good aesthetic improvements up there. Um, a little trip down memory lane for those of you that have not been, um, involved with this for the last decade. So this project actually kicked off back in two thousand twelve. That's when the initial funding request went into WFRC. Um, back in two thousand twelve, the project was awarded seven point seven million dollars and that enabled us to get started on an environmental document. That environmental document was completed back in two thousand and fifteen and it was very clear that we were going to need quite a bit more funding um, to complete the project. So a couple more rounds of funding. Uh, we applied for a, a few different, uh, a few different rounds of STP funds, um, in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. And we were given some additional money. This table here kind of summarizes where that federal funding is. We have about fifteen, a little over fifteen million dollars of, uh, federal funds available for this project. Um, those funds do require a local government match. Um, as previously stated, this is about a seventy-thirty split between Kearns Metro Township and West Valley City. So those available funds, about ten million, um, will go to Kearns, about four million to the city and, and the, the match, the corresponding matches are shown there as well. Um, agreements have been executed with this project. There's a federally agreement in place, uh, with UDOT that uh, agreement is between, uh, the MSD and UDOT and then West Valley City has an interlocal agreement with the MSD to kind of clarify the, the funding allocations and responsibilities moving forward on the project. So with all those agreements in place back in two thousand and nineteen, we were ready to get started on the design. Um, we hired a consultant back in December of two thousand and nineteen to start pushing the design forward. The schedule that you're looking at right now is the schedule that we essentially established back in two thousand and nineteen. This was our target schedule that we were shooting for. Um, as you can see here, we've, we identified some risks back in, in twenty nineteen that we are all a little bit concerned might pop up. Those risks that, that we identified were right away acquisition risks. Um, anytime you're dealing with a project of this size and this many parcels, there's always some concern that there might be a, a holdout or two that, that delays advertising the project. Um, unfortunately that has proven to be true. Currently as we stand, as you can see, we're hoping to have the right of way done earlier this year. We are still working on a few parcels here. Um, of the thirty-three West Valley City parcels, we have cleared thirty-one of those. And Kearns has cleared thirty, thirty of their thirty-five parcels. So we still have about seven parcels that uh, need to be cleared before we can advertise the project. So right away was definitely a major concern. Another concern that we had was getting the railroad agreement, um, getting a, an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad is, is always challenging and always takes a lot longer than we, than we originally planned. So we knew that that was a risk upfront and then of course funding, this is a large project and, and we knew that the fifteen million dollars was not going to cover the entire project. So those, those were the major risks that we identified in two thousand and nineteen. The big thing that was pushing this schedule, the box culvert that has to go over the Utah Salt Lake Canal, it's critical that that gets done in the winter. So the critical path was basically to make sure that we could get that box over in the ground, um, basically right now, the winter of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Realizing that we weren't going to get the right of way, we, we kind of put our heads together to figure out how we can try to keep this schedule and make sure the project's completed by the end of twenty-twenty-three. And so what we decided to do was to separate that box over project, pull it out of the federally funded project so that we could get moving on that. Um, we're not able to advertise a federally funded project until all right of ways cleared. So this pulling it out and doing is a, it's a separate project enabled us to jump the gun a little bit and try to stay on schedule. So we pulled this out and advertised this last fall. And this project was awarded to Acme Construction in November. And it's currently under construction. If you've been out there, you've probably seen, we start to have, we have traffic control, we're down to one lane and there's quite a bit of activity happening, happening around that, that box culvert. So this is underway right now, and this is essentially what we're going to call phase one of our forty-seven hundred south construction project. Phase two, this is where the bulk of the work will happen, the full depth reconstruction, basically from four thousand west out to fifty-four, fifty west. Again, you're going to see that this is not the entire project that gets cut short of fifty-six hundred west. The railroad and the, the intersection improvements are fifty-six hundred west are not included in this phase. And again, that's because we do not have the railroad agreement in place and it won't be in place for quite some time. Um, and we don't want to delay the project with, with inflation and, and other things. We want to make sure that we can keep the project, um, on the schedule that we originally defined. So phase two of the project, this will be the federally funded project. We hope to get the right of way, those last five parcels within the next three to four weeks. It seems like we have a pretty clear path forward on pretty much all but one. We have one that's still a concern, but the other four, we feel like we can get those wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. That will enable us to move forward with advertising the project and hopefully construction will get started in May. And when I say in May, we're actually providing the contractor a flexible start date. Um, we do that to try to help with bid prices a little bit. If they're, if they're pretty scheduled or pretty booked out right now, rather than them trying to charge just a premium to get out here and do the work, we, we offer that flexible start date. So that flexible start date will basically be between May first and July twenty-sixth. The contractor will be able to, um, identify their start date. It doesn't really change the end of the project. We're still, um, you know, choosing those dates to make sure that they can complete the construction by the end of twenty-twenty-three. So this will be the big ticket, um, construction project where the majority of the work will take place. As far as the railroad is concerned, we are at a ninety percent design level there. We're on hold there until we get comments back from Union Pacific Railroad. Once that design gets to a hundred percent stage, that's when the agreement process starts with Union Pacific and that agreement process can take anywhere from six to twelve months. So that's, that's where we're at with the, the west end here. This will be phase three of our project. As you can see, we hope to get this agreement in place by the end of the year, advertise it at the beginning of twenty-twenty-three. And so the construction can also happen next summer. So the overall project is complete, um, by the end of twenty-twenty-three. So those are the three phases of the project. That's how we kind of tackled the, the schedule risks that we had as far as the, the right of way concerns and the railroad concerns. That's how we're splitting this project up to try to make sure it stays on schedule. Um, the other concern obviously we had that we talked about was funding. So this project, here's kind of a breakdown of where we're at with funding. Uh, the box culvert is just gonna, it's gonna cost a little over a million bucks. That phase two construction right now is estimated around twenty-five million dollars and phase three, around three and a half million dollars. So the overall project is approaching thirty million dollars for this project. So it is a large project. It's been a lot of, uh, that's why it's taken a lot of years to get us to this point. Um, it is, it is fairly large. You can see the breakdown there of, of how that works. Um, twenty million dollars of, of these costs are the responsibility of Kearns. Uh, West Valley has a little over ten million dollars and with the federal fund allocation, that leaves uh, West Valley City needing to come up with about six and a half million dollars. Um, and that, that funding will be provided by the, the transportation bond that, uh, we, we have in place. So that's the, that's the big picture of the overall funding that we're looking at for this project. And just to clarify, all federal funds will be utilized in phase two. Um, using federal funds, that means the project has to be administered by UDOT and follow all federal uh, regulations. So all the federal funds will be used in phase two. Whereas phase one and phase three, they will be broken out. They will be, um, West Valley City slash, uh, Kearns Metro Township projects and will be, um, overseen, uh, by the cities. So that's how that breaks up. You will, you will see probably next week or the week after that, an amendment come through for the interlocal agreement. As previously mentioned, we have an interlocal agreement with Kearns to kind of separate, um, you know, funding allocations and responsibilities. Um, we're going to amend that agreement now that we have three separate projects and the main purpose of amending that agreement is just to get both West Valley City and Kearns Metro Township to commit to all three projects and just to continue that same cost sharing responsibility of that seventy-thirty split. So you will see an amendment for the interlocal agreement coming, um, relatively soon. Um, with that, I believe that is it. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is, uh, sorry, is Kearns, what's their plan for the betterment on their side? Is it going to match our side?
So it is not. We have, if I go back to, uh, that slide, we have a lot of areas where we have backyards. Um, uh, these properties are not fronting forty-seven hundred south, which enables us to put in that privacy wall along this long stretch. Whereas on the current size, a lot of these front forty-seven hundred south. So they are not able to put that, that privacy wall in.
And that new wall is going to be so much nicer than those chain link fences that are usually on the ground.
Yeah.
So this is going to be a much needed project completed. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll actually have one comment. Well, go ahead. Say in addition to the chain link fences not being on the ground, the design of the new road structure and all of that should also prevent the new basinry wall from being up on the ground as well, hopefully. So we're looking forward to that as well.
And the bike path to get up to, uh, Mount View Corridor will be great. I mean, it's.
Too bad there's not a really good connection off forty-seventh onto that path.
Yeah.
Get to kind of go into the neighborhood.
So you had a comment?
No, that's it.
Oh, okay. Excited about the bike, bike path. Right. Um, next we have a presentation by Weaver State University. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Pyle to introduce.
Thank you, ma'am. So yes, uh, Weaver State University was gracious enough to request a few moments with you to talk about the Presidential Leadership Fellow update, and I assume particularly to talk about the awardee, Ms. Melissa Heinrichs?
Heinrichs.
Heinrichs, sorry. It was like a fifty-fifty shot there. I messed it up. Sorry. So, uh, President Mortensen, if you would, please.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, Council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you. It wasn't a misprint on your agenda. You may have thought that. What does Weaver State want to do? But, uh, uh, my name's Brad Mortenson. I've been president Weaver State for three years now. Um, I've been at the university for eighteen years and, uh, uh, my campaign, so to speak, to become president was we need to be louder and prouder about all the great things that are happening at Weaver State University and, uh, that after I was appointed, our trustee said, okay, you can't just have that be a campaign slogan. You need to live up to that. What are you going to do? And, and we have, uh, a group every year that we appoint as Presidential Leadership Fellows from among our students that are nominated by faculty and staff across the institution, not just for the great academic work they do, um, but because they're just great engaged students and make a difference at the university and in the communities that we serve. And, uh, so we said, well, for our louder and prouder tour, we're going to go out to the municipalities that are the hometowns of these students and we're going to introduce them and talk a little bit about what's happening at Weaver State and we've traversed across Weber and Davis and Morgan County doing that the last, uh, three years in and out a little bit with the pandemic, but, uh, this is our first venture to Salt Lake County. So thank you so much for welcoming us and, uh, allowing me to introduce Melissa. Before I do that, I want to take a little brief opportunity to tell you a few things about Weaver State and how that relates to West Valley City. Uh, first of all, um, I'm really proud. Last year in two thousand and twenty-one, Weaver State was recognized by a new group, by a group called affordableschools.net who did a, a study of two thousand institutions, higher education institutions across the country that looked at their affordability and return on investment for students. And, uh, and for graduates and Weaver State ranked number nineteen out of that group. We were the only, uh, public school in use, in Utah to make the top fifty on that list. There was a private school south of us here who was a little higher than number nineteen, but, uh, kudos to them, but we're really proud of, of how Weaver State ranked on that group. Also last year, uh, Military Times Magazine ranked us the number two vet friendly school in the country. Uh, our proximity to Hill Air Force Base and the programs we try to provide to serve our veterans, uh, we're, we're very proud of, of that ranking. Uh, last year we adopted a strategic plan that I think you have a PDF copy of in your agenda materials, just to highlight a couple of those features. Um, we adopted a vision that says Weaver State will be a leader in transforming lives by meeting all students where they are challenging and guiding them to achieve their goals academically and in life. Uh, Melissa will share a little bit about that with you, but we have a great legacy of doing that at Weaver State. If I can share a quick story, uh, from a hundred and a half years ago, there was a young man who grew up in Western Weaver County who had stopped out of school at the eighth grade because his dad made him herd sheep all winter long on the Nevada desert and his, uh, family was broke when it came, came time to support him to go to school, but he wanted to be a businessman. He knew he needed to go to college and a faculty member at Weaver College at the time befriended him, got him three or four jobs on campus so he could afford to go to school, helped him navigate the academics to, to overcome his limited education. He graduated from Weber with a two-year degree, went to the University of Utah, met his wife there, discovered A and W root beer. And, uh, as a missionary for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints, he had been in Washington DC and knew they didn't have A and W root beer there and thought he could make a good business by selling cold, ice cold A and W, uh, in a hot DC summer. So he and his wife got the first franchise, went to Washington DC, opened that up. They opened up a hot shop in the winter to sell food. Eventually got into the catering business and then the hospitality industry. And all these years later, Jay Willard Marriott and his company has turned out pretty well. And we take that, um, seriously at Weaver State that any of our students could be the next Jay Ward Marriott. Um, we need to meet them where they are and help them to succeed and, uh, really feel a commitment to that legacy at our institution. And I've tried to build that into our strategic plan. One of the fundamental tenets there is to um, set the goal of becoming an emerging Hispanic serving institution to match the demographic growth that's happening in our community. Um, there are a few, a few other highlights. We currently have a hundred and thirty-three West Valley residents who are among the twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-four students that Weaver State is serving. Uh, Melissa is one of those. Uh, thirty-four of those are actually concurrent enrollment students that are taking advantage of Weaver State classes, um, in their high schools. We have four hundred and fifty-six Weaver State alumni, uh, living in West Valley City, a couple of those. Uh, uh, one is Dr. Erica Baden, who's the Chair of Family Medicine and a physician at the Granger Medical Clinic. Uh, another is Council Member Lars Norkfeld, who accomplished math educator in the state and member of the council and leader in the community. And we're proud to claim him amongst our alumni. We have a number of students who, uh, in, as part of our Center for Community Engaged Learning do service in the community. A student last fall was, uh, doing a, a further clock, classwork to pass. They have to do community service and we had a, a student, uh, serving in the Utah Food Bank here in West Valley or from West Valley in the Salt Lake City area, um, doing service and talked about the impact of, of that project and her education. Uh, you have some fine institutions here that serve your community, Salt Lake Community College, and I haven't told. I haven't told President Huftelein that I'm here and hopefully she won't get upset at me, but, uh, we have several partnerships with them on academic programs with uh, criminal justice, computer science, network technology, um, network management technology and our building design and construction program where we uh, provide, um, uh, the bachelor's degree level education uh, on Salt Lake Community College campuses for students that are in those fields and, and appreciate the great partnership there. Um, SLCC has done a great job with their SLCC Promise Program that provides financial aid and scholarships to um, students who are financially disadvantaged. We have a similar program at Weaver State that takes students through the four-year degree. Um, after they get their associates at SLCC and we're hoping to grow that, um, program. We've also been partnering with, um, uh, the University of Utah through, um, the work of another one of your residents, Senator Karen Main, uh, on supporting the growth and expansion of the Rocky Mountain Center of Occupational Environmental Health. And, uh, we're working on the Weaver State side through our nursing program, which is our largest program or probably our best known program, uh, to help address, uh, needs in occupational health nursing and uh, really are, are proud of the work that we're doing in, in that area. Uh, but without any further ado, I appreciate you indulging me for sharing a few of those rag points. I could go on and on, but please, uh, uh, welcome and congratulate Melissa Heinrichs, one of our Presidential Leadership Fellows for this year. And, uh, she's gonna share with you a little bit about her background and Weaver State experience.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this is my very first council meeting, so, uh, bear with me on the timing of it all. And I would just like to say that I love West Valley City. I'm very grateful. Uh, my family lives here, most of my family. And, um, I didn't actually grow up here. I'm from Logan, Utah. Um, but my aunt is from West Valley City, has lived here her whole life and she actually adopted me when I was younger. And so I moved to West Valley when I was thirteen. I went to Hunter Junior High for a year, my ninth grade year, and then I went to Hunter High School for all of my high school experience and was valedictorian of Hunter High School in the year twenty fifteen. So I love West Valley. I love the programs there. I loved being in the theater program at, uh, Hunter High School and was in one of their shows. I was the narrator in Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And the reason I want to mention that is because that actually contributes to my Weaver State story. So I'll add on to that as I move forward. So, um, in that show, there's a song at the beginning that says, if you think it, want it, dream it, then it's real. You are what you feel. And that is something that aligns very closely with Weaver State in their, um, announcement that we can make dreams happen. Um, that's one of their, uh, promotional logos. That's something that Weaver State stands by. And so, um, when I graduated, I was not sure where I wanted to go to school. I did go through that conflict of, do I go to Salt Lake Community College so I can save money and live at home? Or do I go away? And I decided that it would be best for me to go away and I chose Weaver State University because it is close to home, but also far enough away that I could have my own college experience. And so as I was at Weber, I started out as a vocal performance major, um, um, music education and explored lots of classes with that. Um, and then I learned that Weber, um, is able to, like you're able to change your mind really easily at Weber because they offer so many great programs. And so, um, I left for a time to serve a mission for my church. And then when I came back, I was like, I don't know if music is the right program for me because I love people and I love relationships and I love building those relationships. And so I decided that I was gonna switch my major to family studies at Weaver State. And that has been a life-changing, uh, switch for me. I love that I've been able to learn about my family because obviously I didn't grow up in a perfect household. I was in foster care for a summer and had to be, uh, placed with family and lived with my aunt for a while before we, uh, I was adopted. Um, side note on that, my last name was Lesney before then, so that's a lot harder to pronounce than Heinrichs. But as I continued, um, as I've continued learning about my family and about my relationships, I've just, I've grown that love and that passion for people. And I know for a fact that Weaver State supports that passion. It supports that love for people, um, because it is a small university and the class sizes are small and the professors, they give you individual attention that you need. And that's something that I think everybody needs. And, um, I think that it is something that I hope will be promoted more in our community here in West Valley as well, because I remember in high school when the college recruiters came, there was only one person in the Weaver State room and I was like, I went there and I enjoyed it. And now that I've gone to Weaver State, I'm like, let's change that. Let's make sure that there's lots of people in that room because it is such a great university and it teaches great values. And I know that I will be able to contribute to my future, um, because of the things that I've learned in my university experience. Um, trying to think if there's anything else that I would like to add. I'm very grateful for, um, where I'm going now. That's another good thing is Weaver State does prepare you for where you're going with your future. I am a senior this year. I have one semester left. I'm graduating. I'm very excited and I am moving forward to an interview with the Marriage and Family Therapy Program at UVU. Um, so if I pass that interview, then I'll be going on to grad school in the fall. And that is how I'm going to continue my Weaver State story and add on the community, um, camaraderie with that as well, because it's not just Weaver State, it's Weaver State, it's West Valley City, it's, um, hopefully Utah Valley when I go to UVU and all the, um, all the places that I've been that helped contribute to this wonderful experience. So thank you all so much for your time and I'm grateful that I've been able to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great story.
So, uh, yeah, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for the time. Happy to respond to any questions or, uh, we, we will, you know, try to purple up West Valley City a little bit.
Well, and I did notice the face mask matches as well. It's That's great. Well, I really appreciate you coming out and letting us know, uh, the programs you're you have for the students and for the residents of West Valley, if they choose to just drive a little bit further. And on campus is probably just fine. So they can be far enough away. Actually having children, I understand that comment that the college age was kind of perfect. Far enough away to have your independence, but close enough that if you need help, you can get it. But yeah, whatever we can do to also help you get more people at that table, Hunter High recruiting.
Yeah, we, uh, we are trying to build that pipeline. Uh, we're, we're blessed in Utah with a lot of great higher education institutions. We really are. But I, I feel like Weaver State's a little bit of a hidden gem, especially if you're outside of Weber and Davis County and we can provide great opportunities to help meet students where they are and help them succeed. So.
Great. Any other comments from council members, alumni, anybody?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we'll turn the time over to Ms. Cottle for our legislative updates.
Cottle, um, Councilman Nordfeld, did you say nineteen ninety-six?
Yeah.
I'm nineteen ninety-five Weaver State alum. We might have, we, I'm sure I was not in his math classes. But we might have, you never know. Okay, uh, legislative update. So, um, I wanted to just give a quick update on a couple of exciting things yesterday. Let's see. Yesterday we had a great opportunity to, um, help the University of Utah with regards to a facility that they are looking to, forward to building in West Valley. It's a medical facility and I have a slide. Um, I think Eric's gonna put that up for me that shows this. So it, uh, because, um, the University of Utah is a land grant university, the facilities there, including the medical facilities are state um, funded facilities. Typically, as you're probably aware, the way that that state funding works is you put together a big list and you just start to walk right on down the list. Um, to jump up, up on the list or to modify the list or to bond for different things. Um, you have to go to the legislature and request that. So, um, this, this, uh, facility has, the University of Utah has been working on land assembly for probably, I would say eight months, um, maybe a little bit longer. Uh, they were able to complete that and, and able to go to the um, legislature yesterday. Eric, will you do the other slide first, please? Um, just so you have a little flavor, and this is really early on. Obviously they haven't made application here at the city. Um, haven't sought permits. So these, these pictures are really conceptual and this discussion is really conceptual, but it's a very significant facility. Um, out on fifty-six hundred West, the, it's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand square feet. Um, ambulatory building home to hundred eighty-five exam rooms and ancillary services. Part of that is an exciting thing they want to do in the community with regards to, um, seeking out employment and employees from our community directly, starting at the high school level with the CNA um, possibilities that are here. This facility is a four hundred million dollar facility with a two thousand new um, jobs that will be happening in the facility and their intent is to recruit from the, from the city. So that's part of what you see here is, is that scenario, about four hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet of inpatient hospital, a hundred and eighty-seven inpatient beds. You can see the rest of that there. This is a, um, for lack of way, a better way to put it, a full-service facility, um, at the level that the U would provide. So a very exciting thing for uh, the residents of the city and, um, has been in the works for quite a little bit of time. Just from even a discussion perspective, this, the genesis of this really did start back with our really great partnership that you're aware of, um, with Opportunity Scholars and the business school there, uh, Rich Kifusi at the University of Utah, which was our first real entree into the university system. And from there, um, he has been a great ambassador for us. I think you've heard, we mentioned him before, in the university system. Uh, really has touted West Valley and, and our relationship with them. So this dates all the way back to that. Um, Eric, would you go to the other one just really quickly? This is the presentation the University of Utah gave. So when I say we were able to support, um, like I shared with Mayor Lane yesterday, who was there to, um, support the university as well. Um, while this is not our ask for, for, uh, from a um, funding perspective, they will seek to move the bonding for this facility up to the top of their list, so to speak. And, uh, because it's a West Valley facility, the legislature looks at this as if it's a, um, a, a I give or an assistance to West Valley. So it's great to partner with them and, and demonstrate our support. Um, you can see the timeline down here. Of course, like I said, this is all preliminary and you can see kind of how they have the facility laid out with also some nice green areas and, and varying buildings. So, um, just a quick, like I say, brief update, much more to come. That, this very, very early stages, obviously they're still getting the funding. There's a long way between here and there, even legislatively, long thirty days before they will know whether or not they're able to start on this facility based on the funding, um, that they've asked for. So I don't suspect that it will be, uh, anything but approved, just given the climate and the needs here in the, in the city and the legislative desire to do that and because it's a bond. Um, so I don't, I don't foresee that they'll have problems, but that is that. We also, um, had, you'll remember the formula that I provided to the group about how funding kind of comes together. So we have all of our lists of needs, like forty-seven hundred is a great example. It's on the big, long list of road needs. One of the lists is, comes from the fire department and one of the things you're well aware of is their breathing apparatus. Um, not everything on every list has a place or a possible state or federal fund line. And once in a while we make a match and that's kind of the way that this works is as things ebb and flow, knowing the needs, um, of various departments and the funds that are generally made available at the legislature, we try to match those up. So this year, really uniquely, normally in my whole time doing this twenty-some years, I would never have thought that this would potentially be something that the state might fund, but the breathing apparatus that you have seen at your council level, um, that we needed to replace is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Typically it would not be an item that would have any kind of funding at the state level available. Um, but because of ARPA and because it's a very unique year, there's possibility of that. So, um, our great fire department and, um, uh, Senator Maine, uh, put that forward. Um, someone on behalf of Senator Maine asked, actually Senator Askamia about a week ago now. The dates elude me, um, but we won't know on that for a while, but that's a really unique one. Historically, we wouldn't, um, do that. The other two of interest is to give you an update. The one that I know is really a hot topic right now that we talked about before is the, um, loud vehicles. That bill, um, did proceed out of committee. It's been substituted. The substitution is really of not much consequence. The, the bill requires that the noise be, um, measured at the time that the emissions and any other inspection that is applicable um, happen. And, uh, as I mentioned before, there's some significant pushback there. Um, but with the amendment that was suggested by one of the other parties, it looks like it'll at least go partial, part of the way. So I'll keep you up to date on that, but it did make it out of committee. So that's good news. Um, a lot of land use bills that are being discussed, but not necessarily released language yet. Again, we've talked about that our land use as, as we're mostly developed, um, the, the very dramatic things don't typically apply to us, even when we talk about affordable housing and the things that they might additionally layer into the moderate income housing plan. For the vast majority of those, if not every single one, long into the future, we comply and comply in full and in robust ways. So, um, not quite as worried about that as others as well. Uh, happy to answer any other questions about bills. We're up to about a hundred that we're monitoring now and at being added daily. That will start to take a really pretty radical clip here towards the end of this week and you'll see us bump up quite a bit, but I'll just keep adding to those and send it out to you. Any questions?
Do you have any comment on the landscaping requirement for, uh, provision, uh, HB ninety-five?
Yeah, the one that allows us to not, uh, per, uh, require turf and uh, that, and such. So, uh, our residential ordinances currently, um, comply with the way that that is being, uh, drafted. And the draft that we mentioned during strategic plan that is being prepared for you, I think is prepared and, uh, maybe even scheduled. Um, would go the rest of the way. So from a concern at the city level perspective, um, we will be in compliance anyway with what they're requiring. So we're good to go.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any concerns with the council calendar? Did everybody get the email about Tool or see it on the, uh, update?
Oh, yeah.
Do I relate that or should I just find my email and read it?
Go right ahead. Yeah.
It broke a lot of records. Could have thought. Cause honestly, I, other people in my life know exactly who Tool is.
It's kind of how my life is too. I mean, I got kids and knew who it was. I'm never gonna be to a Tool concert probably, but yes, lots of
A lot of people.
A lot of people and records broken.
So from Mr. Pyle's update, it says that it was the single largest performance so far for the Maverick Center. Um, James Taylor used to hold the record, now Tool does. And there was another record-broken merchandise. So One Direction, I was at that one. It was crazy.
Did you buy a T-shirt though?
Yeah, I did. Oh, yeah. I buy a T-shirt everywhere. I have a pile. I don't know what my kids will do with that.
To the merch record on that one.
I gotta help, yeah, you know?
It's awesome.
So they broke that record as well. Thirty-seven dollars per person average. So two really good records. It, and the no-show rate was only four percent when normally it's like twelve. Especially where it's been canceled and rescheduled. So anyway, I thought that was pretty good. That was a good schedule and a good report. So.
Rock on.
Yeah. And then we went to the quick quack car wash today. That was really nice. And Council Member Chrisison and Councilman Whitstone were there and they had water-wise landscaping and they reclaimed their water and reuse it, which they've been doing since oh, or yeah, oh five. And that's pretty forward-thinking for our timing right now. So that was pretty nice. And they've got a great crew out there. So that was nice.
And the, the community event where they
Oh, yeah. Do you want to tell about that one?
Yeah. So the family in our community has a daughter and I don't remember the name of the Yeah, so the family in our community has a daughter, and I don't remember the name of the genetic disorder.
Yeah, I don't.
But it's unique, and the doctors mentioned that if she reaches, this little girl reaches five years old, it would be like winning the lottery. So, she just turned seven. And so, the family is, you know, dealing with the day-to-day of caring for this child. And they did a fundraiser for her and presented the family with a check for seventy-five hundred dollars to help cover costs and just to help the family out. So, it was, it was emotional, you know, lots of tears, but it was a good event.
It really was. And they're very community-oriented. If your group or club wants to do a fundraiser, they're in for fundraisers. They're just very community-oriented as well. So, I think that'll be a good addition. Okay, any concerns with the calendar? Okay, seeing none. Any potential future agenda items?
I have one, just on the bid process. Is there a document or a governance that we could refer to on how the process works? Or maybe, I don't even know, if we have to bring it back to the study session, maybe you just say, oh, here it is.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Would anybody else like that? Or?
Yeah, I would. Is it similar to the current policy?
Yeah. Included with it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anybody else want a copy? And council reports. I guess I already gave mine. Kind of, sorry.
I went to Beauty and the Beast Saturday night. Our family has a history with Beauty and the Beast, had a daughter who loved it growing up, so we've seen it in about six different venues on two different continents. And this was up there with all of them.
Not good reports.
Very good presentation, doing it in that smaller confined area always poses some interesting problems. And they overcame all of those. So, well done, and one of the best we've seen.
Oh, good. So, on that note, we had received an email. Do you have an answer yet?
Yes, it is tomorrow.
Okay, so the email came out saying there were discount tickets available to us. And it says Wednesday, but it also says the third, and Wednesday's the second. So, it is tomorrow night that that offer is available. And there was instructions in the email of what to do there.
There's a new, another email came out.
Oh, good. Okay.
So, to clarify. So, thank you.
All right. Hey, did you have anything else, Don? Okay. Anybody else? All right. Let's see. It looks like we do have a need for a closed session to discuss the deployment of security. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
Now, do we want to do it after the
What time is it now? How long will it take?
It'll take literally three minutes, but if you want to do it afterwards, that's fine as well.
Let's just do it.
Move to going to closed session to discuss deployment of security. And I turn from there with no further business being conducted.
Thank you. Have a motion a second. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you.